All right.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of McCandless Planning Commission meeting for September third, twenty twenty four. We have two items on the agenda. The first is relatively short. The second one's gonna be a little more comprehensive. Uh, let's start with the first item. That's the Schramm simple subdivision application on Harmony Drive. Do we have anyone making an application or presentation?
Pardon me?
Do you want to make a presentation? If you do, please come forward.
Want to make a presentation?
Your, your choice.
No, I don't need to. I discussed it with PJ.
Okay, can we have a whatever comment you want to give us then?
Oh, am I presenting the plan?
Think the applicant should.
I think the applicant usually presents.
Yeah, I mean.
You just tell us what you're trying to do.
Please, please come to the front. We need you on the recording.
Please state your name and your address.
Uh, Ronald L. Schramm. Ninety seven fifteen Harmony Drive. Been a resident in McCandless for almost forty eight years. Regarding the simple subdivision, I live in ninety seven fifteen. I'd like to build a small ranch. Or a convenience factor for my age. I built houses for my whole entire life, so. I'm down to maybe one.
One more?
Yeah, that's it. Trust me. Body won't let me do too much. But that's it.
So the, the plan, you, you're existing lot, you're dividing in half.
Correctly, correct.
The dwelling that exists on the, in this plan, on the right-hand side, will remain?
The dwelling on the first lot would remain. The garage and the shed would be raised because that would be the location, prime location for us, and these are one of our much valued.
Okay. And then I presume you'll move into the one that you construct over there on the other lot? Presumably sell the, the first one that you're moving out of?
That are family, you know how that is.
All right. Any questions from anybody?
I do have one.
True.
And it's that the driveway. So if you're planning on having two homes, one on each of these parcels, you have one driveway.
There's a driveway on ninety seven fifteen at this present time. And there's also a driveway off of McCutcheon at this present time. There's two driveways on property of existence.
It's not drawing, it's not clear. Is it, is?
But if, that would be probably relocated whenever the house would be established.
There's a driveway, a U-shaped driveway off Harmony Drive for the two-story dwelling on Lot Two?
Correct.
This is a driveway, apparently. It isn't labeled.
Okay.
Okay, just because each lot, individual subdivided lot should have its own access.
Right. It would more than likely come off of McCutcheon. The driveway would, if you, the elevation is not favorable off of Harmony Drive.
You're saying the new dwelling, you would use the McCutcheon driveway?
Correct.
Sell or selling or distributing to family, the existing dwelling would use Harmony Road Drive.
Correct.
And the address of the new building will be which?
Preferably on the McCutcheon roadside.
Yeah, I mean, we, you do that. The building.
So.
Worked on this. We don't have a problem with that.
Westby Water Works at the Fire, Fire Company property. Uh, I talked to Joe Dinkle. And he wanted a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars to run the water from the corner of the fire, fire fire station property to the opposite corner. And it's just not feasible. Uh, you can do probably four or five wells for that same price. But sewage is there. Yeah, so.
So you'd, you'd still be paying for the, the bond? Just not a use charge on the water, I'm assuming? Is how that works? Or do you have to be connected?
To far to the appropriate utility to answer that question.
So you do realize that there will have to be a, a note put on the plan that.
For the address to be on.
No, that this lot is not technically an approvable lot because an accessory building can't be the primary building on a lot. So.
The accessory buildings, the notes are to be raised.
Shed and the garage will be raised?
Um, I only have two notes, and I don't see anything that says they're going to be raised.
Is there an updated plan?
Notes from Gateway?
See the updated plan? Yeah, but that was one of our comments.
Yeah, that's one of the notes from Gateway that you should have.
Right.
We do, but your plan doesn't reflect that.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, well.
It needs to be on the plan.
Right.
So you will be amending the plan?
If you only have two notes, it has to be amended. Everything was Gateway had sent us, was approved and sent back to them. And that was several weeks ago.
Yeah, but as far as I'm aware, Ed didn't send a new actual revision of the plan.
He didn't send the actual revision?
I, I didn't.
If you, if you didn't get it, I'll contact you.
I, I think we got a response that like everything was agreed to, but that's not.
That's what is obviously Ed's doing my my work.
Yeah, um. I'm looking through my emails.
That's all right.
And even though we didn't get the, the new plan drawing, Gateway is okay with what has been going back and forth between you two so far? No other issues?
Well, there were a number of other comments that need to be addressed.
Yeah, we had.
There were like fourteen that were addressed on the sheet from Gateway.
Okay, so it sounds like those comments may have been addressed, so we, we will review the updated plan we received to make sure they are. Most of these were cleanup related. Um, the only more technical one was about the garage and shed being raised to make sure that we didn't.
Like I said, that was noted on that.
Right, yeah, yeah. So we'll double check once we do receive it. I'll check my email, too. I don't think I have received anything from Ed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing. You haven't seen anything?
You didn't receive it from Gateway either? He didn't get the letter?
What do you, no, I mean, I, I have Gateway's review letter, but, but no, I.
He didn't get anything from Ed, you're saying? Okay.
He nee- he needs to send it to that development at towncanlis.org address. Whatever his revised plan is.
Gather where you're coming from. Okay, if you only have two notes, it's, uh, complete.
Any comments over the side? Nothing? Nothing more? So other than getting these, uh, new plans submitted, which I assume is a technicality.
I mean, yeah, we would do the.
Conditional, yeah. You know, everything that.
So, uh, is there any other public comment regarding this plan for subdivision? Doesn't seem like it. Uh, so before us then, we, uh, have a motion. Are we ready for the motion, everybody thinks? Uh, so I suggest that we, uh, need a motion to recommend Town Council approve the Schramm simple subdivision application submitted by Mr. Ronald Schramm. Can I have such a motion?
Do you want to make the condition?
Obviously conditional upon everything we've gotten.
That, that all the engineers' comments are met, including I'll, I'll do the usual.
Everything.
I will make that motion.
All right, motion. Second? All in favor?
Did we get?
We got a second from Sean. All in favor of that motion, conditional motion?
All right.
All right. No, uh, not approved, not, uh, in favor? Nothing? Okay, so it's conditionally approved?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Uh, when is all of that information due?
Uh, this could be on the September twenty-third council meeting. Typically. I mean, typically, we'd like to have at least two weeks review time, but we're pretty tight on that right now. By the end of the week would be ideal, but you know, if there are a couple little things that need to be cleaned up and still reviewed. Yeah, that would be great, um, because then we can get you guys on the September twenty-third council meeting.
Okay, then if you miss that one, you'd be on the next.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, uh, and this has, uh, many issues, and I presume there might be a presentation. This is the continued review for the Rachel Carson Eco Village Land Development Application. Uh, we have a presentation? Let us know where things stand?
Uh, I'm Stephanie Danes, project manager for the Eco Village. Um, do you need my address?
Please.
Five one three two Friendship Avenue, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, one five two two four.
All right.
And we have, uh, had reviews of our drawings, um, by Gateway, and we've had a number of conversations to clarify details, but we have reached the point where I believe we've um, reached all of the, um, the, all the questions that have been raised have been dealt with. Uh, and we have, um, contractors, we have, um, submitted the budget to the bank, so um, we are uh, looking for the township's approval, and if we get it, we will move ahead to construction this fall.
So maybe it would be good to kind of just set the stage for like what we, what we have in front of us, what the, the agenda looks quite beefy, I understand, with the modification request, but just to kind of.
Question before you do that?
Yes.
What's the zoning hearing board modification application, August twenty, twenty twenty-four? We don't know anything about that.
I think it's don't know why it was called zoning hearing board, because the zoning hearing board does hear modifications, but they, they did submit a letter that included all of these modifications that are on your agenda. So I assume that that was just incorrect.
Wait, referring to?
Where?
On the third bullet? Zoning hearing board request for modification application dated August twentieth, twenty twenty-four?
Oh, that, yeah, that's probably a misprint on, I can verify real quick on our part, and that could be an additional modification that they submitted in this last round.
Okay, so it's, it's all of these modifications that.
Yes, yeah, it will.
And we did see the letter. There was a letter. I just didn't.
Yeah, and then, and then those are all like what I what I converted into, yeah, because it says planning commission members on this letter, but those are all what I converted into the motions that are on your actual agenda. I think the latest one is the twenty-ninth, but they probably got one that was dated the twentieth, you know, the original revision. So yeah, um, we have a letter that although, you know, it's still, if you're looking at the actual PDF, the count for the pages is five. And we would normally consider something that was that long to be a longer letter. In this case, because we've had so many different I'll just pull this up on the screen, so we're all looking at it, because we've had so many different files that have been flying between this review. Um, and just, you know, some of the routine administrative comments, it makes the letter look like there is more to it than there actually is. No, right, right, not, not as much beef. Um, there's, I mean, there's still some stuff on there that, that they need to work through with Gateway, but you can see like the whole first page at this point is just the middle information that we've seen over the past year. We've got a page of stormwater and a little bit of geotech. And then by the time you hit page three, we're into the general comments, and this is where all of those third-party approvals land, you know, the things that we always put on there, like, uh, memorializing the variance request, this whole half of this page here is just enumerating all of the modifications that then show up on your agenda. And that's pretty much what all the rest, this is all bonding, third-party, and then just CCs, because there were so many people to CC. So the real bulk of the actual technical comments that are left are on page two. And a little bit of overflow onto page three. What you functionally have is a one-page comment.
Right, right, and you're engineers comfortable that they can produce the comments that show the right calculations and all of that?
Yeah, so in the letter we issued on Friday, um, we had gotten some documents resubmitted to us Friday morning, so we worked through as much as we could. We continued today to review the comments, and majority of the minor technical comments have been addressed. We have a few cleanup items, but nothing that's of concern from a stormwater management standpoint. We were able to work through those types of comments over the past month, month and a half with them. I mean, I think there's, if there's still, yes, there are some things that need to be ironed out and some additional pieces of information that, you know, Gateway is still going to want to talk through. But when it comes to the questions that I usually ask at this forum before I feel comfortable telling you guys it's fair to take a vote is, is there anything material that's going to change about the plan from a planning perspective? No, we're already the point where the layout, there's no reason for the layout to change. Is the plan workable in theory if we get those details, you know, ironed out and fine-tuned? Yes, from what Kelly's telling me anyway, yes. Um, so yeah, I, I, there's, there's quite a few modifications that go through here, and I think we probably want to turn to Kelly as we're going through them, because none of them are like totally off the wall. They make sense for what the plan is, I think, for the most part.
Um, the only one that concerned me was the loading, getting a waiver from, which is the next to the last one?
Yeah, and I think, I think that's Kelly, I'm sure can speak to this much more eloquently than I can, but my understanding is that this calculation maybe doesn't this is modification request number five.
Yeah.
Following along. This, maybe this calculation doesn't totally make sense for this property, because the loading area is all of the places that could drain to, you know, a certain facility or point or whatever. And usually, when you're looking at that calculation, that's because that area is all developed, like it's not pre-development condition, whereas most of this is like untouched. So I don't, I don't know the engineering technical wisdom behind that, but that's, you know, I feel like maybe this is skewing kind of to the extreme just because of the nature of the site.
You're giving them some credit for.
So, so the, the loading ratios, RJ, you're correct. It looks at the total area that goes to facilities, and then it also looks at the pervious area that goes to the facilities. And I know we've seen this, um, on a past submission, too. Um, this is a recommendation, um, in the stormwater, uh, PDP code. The Town of McCandless Code has adopted that as a requirement. So the challenge you have for sites that have a lot of smaller VMPs that, um, is basically you have to have a larger footprint. So in a a facility that's coming in to try and be more eco-friendly as far, because they're trying to work around the trees, so they would have to make the facility bottoms larger. So the intent of why these loading ratios exist is to just be sure that there's consideration taken to how, taken to how fast the facilities can take the water and making sure we're not going to, um, you know, create a pond that's either not going to infiltrate very quickly or infiltrate too quickly and flood somebody downstream from a subsurface perspective. So in this case, too, we look at who's immediately downstream. Are we on any big slopes where we're going to cause somebody right below them to potentially find a seat in the, um, you know, rock, bedrock, for example? Um, so those are certain things that we would consider, and, um, I think with this type of design, it is reasonable, given the fact that they're trying to work within the bounds and provide a more eco-friendly design.
Well, and is it also that the trees, if I read the request properly, the trees and the grasses in the wetlands or whatever actually take more, it then take more infiltration than?
Yes, yes, they definitely help from stormwater.
Okay. Helpful on, on that item, but we really need to go back up to the very top. And it says that we're, according to the agenda, that we're going to make an opportunity for public comment. Do we have public comment?
Well, wait, before we get there, let's say, do you all have any questions? Just, okay, so let's do that first, because that comes before you vote. The, I'm sorry.
You don't want to go, you don't want to go.
The public comment is before you actually call a vote to these things, but the presentation discussion, all that should take place before you get there.
Okay, I, well, I'll go to the, uh, item number B then. I don't have, I don't recall discussion about sidewalks, eliminating sidewalks, using sidewalks, having sidewalks. When did we have that discussion?
Probably the first meeting about about not needing to put a sidewalk in for the driveway from the, the overflow parking, correct?
Right.
Because it was already kind of a path and there wasn't, it, it wasn't public per se. It's just the people coming from the overflow parking to the site. So I do remember we had a conversation about that.
Yeah, and, and if you're wondering about sidewalks along public frontage, this property technically has none.
Well, that's the, that's the next part of my question. What about along Cumberland Road?
That's, so yeah, that's, let me, let me see if I can pull up a map to show you, because this is one of the things that's very hard to describe, but very easy to see, right? Um, this is quite silly. But when Cumberland Road was, the extension was plotted out. Um, that was through UPMC's property.
Right, and UPMC owns part of the property across the road, is.
UPMC, yes, UPMC owns one tiny little strip that goes all the way across, all the way down and around, completely around the bend. So this property actually is landlocked, but when we approved the subdivision from the sister's property, it was with the modification that if UPMC would grant a permanent access easement, which they did, then we would allow the subdivision. That being said, because there is no pu- public frontage, that removes the requirement to construct a sidewalk along Cumberland, because that would be the public frontage of Cumberland, which does not exist. This is for the, the internal drive, though.
Okay, but how does, how does what you just described differ from what we did with the Starbucks location, where Starbucks did not own apparently the immediate property along Bla- I don't know if that's Blazer Drive, whatever that, that road is.
The cap, yeah.
Uh, and they had to get some sort of permission, easement, license, whatever they got in order to build their sidewalk.
Starbucks does not own the property that they are on or the little end cap. Those are both owned by the landlord, which I believe is First City. Um, and so they actually changed the configuration of that sidewalk. So that it no, it no longer goes straight through the property. That was, I think that's what we maybe approved at, like that secondary thing.
Approved the modification because they couldn't do what?
Right.
We asked.
But they, but they had, that property had public frontage, and, and the modification that we allowed was basically to deviate from building fully within that public frontage at the time, which they ended up mostly building in the public frontage anyway, because that's what the landlord wanted. But point being, this is a different conversation because public frontage existed at all, whereas here it does not.
Okay. I'm a little confused by that, but.
What?
I mean, there is, there is frontage on a public road.
No.
No.
That's, you're up, up.
I mean, I can picture it. I've, I've driven.
I know, I.
My wife goes to the hospital every day for the last six months.
It's not part of the site.
And I've passed it. So, but the property goes out there, but who who is responsible for that property immediately on the nun's side of Cumberland Road?
UPMC. Do you see the green, the little?
Okay.
Blue, light blue outline? That is a parcel. It's owned by passive. It was created during the extension of Cumberland, and it goes from here.
So the, the requirement that we have in, that we've applied in virtually every other, uh, thing we've done, it says, when you're developing a property, you put a sidewalk out on the, on the road, does not apply here because this property does not go to the road?
That, that requirement only applies when the property touches a public right-of-way, which this property does not. These are the bounds.
And there is a sidewalk on the other side.
Right, yes, but, but I mean, that's because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there is public frontage over there. But in this case, for this project, this whole strip is not owned and not controlled and not part of the project site. It is fully separate property.
Who's going to cut it and take care of it and do all that?
You can't say.
Yeah, I, probably whoever does that now. Which is to say it's woods. So probably nobody, because it will still be woods.
Well, I've seen them mowing right along the road.
I mean, but yeah.
Yes, they do mow.
If there's grass, I hope they mow it. Somebody would probably have called us.
Yeah.
But yeah, no public frontage for this parcel. I think the section of the ordinance two states, um, sidewalks to be installed along all existing and proposed public private streets, common driveways and common parking areas. So it does talk about more than ju- just the public frontage, which they can't do here. The waiver request is, you know, there's a common drive, it's fire access, um, point, but there's still, you know, a drive there, so they're requesting those, um, relegated from that. Anyway, I think, I think part of the reasoning here is it's not it's a common area, but it's not a public area. Like, nobody should be walking back there unless they're supposed to be here, because it's private property at that point. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Yes, and there will be no, typically no vehicular traffic.
Right.
So it's basically a wide sidewalk. It's a wide path. And we have some other paths on the site, but that's just a wide walking path. The whole thing is a wide walking path.
What is a reen- reinforced turf shoulder?
Um, you may have seen it in, um, where occasionally there's an expansion of parking on an area that looks like grass, but it actually has some um, solid grid under it. And that's what that is. It's reinforcing to be structural, to be able to handle heavy loads, but um, it has openings in it that, that grass can grow.
Is this posed for one side or the other, or is the eight-foot-wide split equally on either side of the axis?
No, it's on one side.
Which side is that on?
It's on the eastern side as it comes down into the community, and it just stays on that side.
So for Steve, I've forget, it went back and forth with the fire marshal, fire department. Did they approve the hammerhead?
Yes.
They did.
They did?
Yes, they, um, dimensions are good. We wanted a statement on the plan, which I think Kelly was working today with Barton on. Yeah, he, he did add the note about, um, that basically the grid system that they're using can be rated for, um, fire trucks. So we had a note to spec- specifying, you know, the requirements there. So we all, you know, in ten years can look back and know that the system used was rated to be able to carry a fire truck and allow them to turn turn around on. So that note was added today to the plan.
Is there an updated version of the plan that we can look at while we discuss these, or is it still?
I.
Prior iteration that are.
Thank, for the most part, you guys had.
Had it last month?
No, it's on well, hang on, let me see if something didn't get uploaded, but I sure thought I did.
No, we didn't get a plan this term. I didn't get a plan this term.
There is a there's a whole folder named Plan Sheets in the drop-off. Yeah, so what?
I would just be helpful, like, look at it.
Do you have, like, I've got, like, Kelly's layout.
Just the layout.
Like, okay.
Hammerheads, access rooms, things like that to look at.
Oh, you're gonna miss that.
That's okay. These are, I, I, I can tell you that it, it was done when I sent the email out, because I did not go home.
Yeah.
So, okay, here, I'm going to pull up the plan, Brendan.
Thank you.
All right. This is probably, I mean, I'm just going to have to scroll around a little bit to, you know, zoom into detail, so let me know if there's any particular area you would like to look at, and I will then await it for you. Do you want to see the turf reinforcement along, so zoom into like the driveway section, RJ? For the fire accesses? Yeah, like this is part of it. On like the north side, when you're like at the bottom, you, you'll see a different hatch there. It's kind of crosshatched. That's the eight-foot-wide section of that turf reinforcement.
As we're looking at it, it's on the right-hand side.
Yeah. Like the east side. Along, yeah, so like.
That's on G side.
Yes.
And then into the, or, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, it's the hedge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm going to pull something else up just for a second. I don't know if this is an accurate representation, but I did a little bit of Googling while we were here. And this seems to be kind of the vibe of what reinforced turf looks like. You can see kind of the pavers, the grid through here. And then it allows the grass to.
You must have a subbase of some sort, too, yes.
Yeah, so the provider does have specifications for subbase prep, and Barton also clarified, too, from a, how you treat this as a, you know, more like a grass or more like pavement, because you still have a subbase um, from the manufacturer of this. There is, they do have proof without using, you know, the curve numbers, so the runoff coefficient equivalent to open space. Um, so we did go through that to make sure.
Um, so we did go through that to make sure that that was documented for the specific type of, um, grass paper system we want.
How does that work in the winter?
Okay, who, is, does mechanless plow this?
No, no, we do.
You do.
All private.
Yep.
But does that grass just die?
Yes.
And then it's just plastic, isn't it? Or is it some other material?
The grass?
No, no, no.
The structure.
The substraps. I think they're, they're concrete, aren't they, or cement?
Some are concrete, but the most are today are plastic, little rings.
Yeah, so they should be supported from like a traffic rating with the subbase there. So even if like the grass dies, the media that's up there, it may be dormant or, you know, not really growing, but it still should support it from a rating perspective. But yeah, there may be some different winter maintenance that they would have to do on that shoulder versus the driveway.
I'm assuming there's topsoil or something in between your rings to support the grass, yeah.
And, and often it's, it's sweeping rather than shoveling, just sweep it off. If you, if you.
Right. I don't think that we say no. Was there anything else you wanted to speak for now?
The hammerhead.
Here we are.
Which one of those is the hammerhead?
It's the, the whole kind of teat shaped.
That whole thing.
Yeah.
So they, and Kelly was, this sheet might be the one that's a little out of date, because I have the asphalt strip on this one. Is there supposed to be one over here? Is this all?
Yeah, so Stephanie clarified the, the, in that hammerhead, is there supposed to be asphalt through it? Or is it going to be all of the turf reinforcement?
It's turf reinforced.
Okay, so, so this main drive surface is the asphalt strip, but then it backs up into here and that's where it makes the turn and it can get back to the asphalt strip. But when it's backing.
They can drive on that.
And, yeah.
Just as well as the asphalt.
Okay. But this meets the dimensional requirements for our margins.
We explored permeable pavement? And, and what was the findings regarding that versus?
It's not as permeable as this.
You're using that in your parking lot, aren't you? The permeable pavement?
Um, we're just using asphalt. Because the permeable pavement actually is not that much more permeable. It does require.
I thought at one point you proposed the permeable pavement, so.
And, and honestly.
Yeah, okay, absolutely.
For, for this area here with the reinforced turf and, you know, it's been a little while since I did the green infrastructure classes, but I'm under the impression that permeable pavement is not necessarily something that you want heavy loads on for any length of time, because that tends to cause trouble with like, I guess, the undergrid or like, it's just, it's something that is not really recommended for a drive surface. It's more recommended for like, if you're parking regular sized vehicles on it and having them come in and out of the parking lot, that's fine. But that's not necessarily something that you'd want to be your reliable drive surface, whereas it seems that this reinforced turf is designed with the intent to be able to swap in for a drive surface. So the weight load is going to be more adequate for what we need, yes?
Exactly, and there are light duty grades of this kind of reinforcing and there are heavy duty, and this is the heavy duty version.
Any feelings as sprinklers?
Can we talk about item D just for a second? You're, you're asking for a waiver of the fifteen foot buffer along Cumberland Road? And in its place, a partial buffer is proposed. Do we know the details of this partial buffer or what that really means?
Yeah, we're, we're planting where we can. Um, but that area was the, um, the embankment of the road. And so, um, but our site is actually lower than the road itself. Um, and we're, um, the, the we're, we're expanding the woods as much as we can, but, um, there's riprap along there from the road construction that's going to remain. Um, and so we're gradually, over time, we'll add more trees, but we won't have trees planted in there. Um, it's, uh, as I say, it's, it's really buffered already from the road.
Uh, roughly how far are the trees from the road currently?
Um, they are, they, they vary, but maybe from thirty to fifty feet.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, so I just pulled up, it's gonna take a second to proliferate, because this is probably one of the most heavily drawn sheets in this plan set. And if there are any irregularities, this is the, like, I have the complete plan set from the twentieth, when we got this set of revisions, there are probably some things that were tweaked between this and the site plan, because that was from the twenty ninth, you know, but, I mean, I, I would be hard pressed to say that they haven't met the spirit of the code by what's going on, because again, these, these the regulations, I think that we did a lovely job with them, but they were definitely not written, assuming that somebody was building an eco village. Um, they were assuming that lots would mostly be white, you know? So, and we have an audience member that would like to come to the microphone if you would like.
Yeah. Please, I was gonna introduce for.
Um, yeah. My name is Barton Kirk, um, uh, engineer with, uh, EPOS Collaborative and, uh, Civil Environmental Engineer on this project. Um, the, the one clarification I'd like to make is that this, uh, this request for the waiver is specifically to, um, permit, um, we can't plant over the utility easements, um, over, um, some of the utilities that are being constructed along, uh, Cumberland Ro- Road. And so it actually crosses through, um, uh, the, uh, through the buffer area. And so what we're looking for is a waiver to, you know, we have provided a significant amount of, of, uh, planting some, uh, within, um, the buffer zone, but in that particular area where the utilities would be constructed, um, and that's what we're requesting, uh, the waiver.
So this is not, uh, asking for a waiver all along Cumberland Road, Cumberland Road, only where these utilities somehow cross in or come in.
Yes.
The rest of the areas without the utilities, you will be putting a buffer.
You can, you can see the planting.
Yeah, so here's the planting plan, and then I think right around here
Yeah, let's figure that out.
is where it crosses. And then if you hop over to this utility plan, you can see right here, that kinda corresponds different scale, but.
It's just rather loosely worded, frankly, and you could.
We, when, when this happens, for example, like at the zoning hearing board, we're looking at plans and talking them through, it's a little clearer than like what you put on the agenda. The stipulation that they like to put on there is as presented to the board. Um, so then you can refer back to it, as shown on plans.
Any of these other motions, any questions or comments?
Can I just ask a question on, uh, motion E? That, that shared, that, that drive from the shared parking lot that, that goes down now, how, how wide is that currently?
There's no drive.
Well, that, not, it doesn't, I know it doesn't, there's a, there's a paved road from the.
Right, but we're talking about the new parking. Which is.
Down from there to the, okay.
Across from Cumberland Woods.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
From the Cumberland Wood, okay.
And that's coming down that slope. It's so steep that
Oh, okay, my mistake, okay.
Would, would be really problematic.
But that's not intended for vehicles to come down. That's basically a sidewalk, correct?
No, no, that's, that's a.
Drive access.
Light driveway. To the parking lot. For the residents.
That's from Cumberland to the park.
Yes.
Okay, I was confusing from parking lot down to the village.
Oh, yeah, there's not that, yeah.
Right.
Right.
And it, is it, it's over here, right? Or can you see on the, where I'm pointing on the plan? Okay, yeah, so basically it's, it's coming in to the last bend there.
And two cars. Cross paths there with the, the angle.
Some Pittsburgh streets are less than that, but. Is there, is there clear vision from the, where the parking spaces are to Cumberland Road? So would a vehicle trying to access from Cumberland Road see that there's a vehicle in the road?
Um, I would say yes, because that's a long.
Right, I'm just trying to visualize that. So theoretically.
It is pretty flat across the driveway.
Yeah.
Um, it's the, really from where you leave the parking lot to right around where you see the radius for like that right of way. It looks like you gain maybe a foot or so, so it's not like you would be having steep slopes coming in and out.
Yeah.
So theoretically, vehicles would see that there would be another vehicle there, is what we're saying.
And, and this should also be exclusively used by the residents, correct? So, yeah, so I mean, not, not ideal, I agree. However, for the most part, there will not be users who are unaware of this condition, because the visitors would come to the sister's parking lot anyway.
That's right.
Okay.
Is there any margin with that? I understand that twenty four feet is not doable, is, is it, does it have to be fifteen feet, or is there any, like, is twenty feet possible?
We work really hard to get fifteen feet. As a bad slope. There is, there is cars that are just moving very slowly and all of the neighbors know each other. That's not a hard thing to manage.
There a way to re-engineer the ingress egress point to get a little bit more width?
Perfect, but there's a wetland right at the end of the parking lot. You can't, you can't come in. What is, yeah, we, we, we started there. Exactly. And aren't you restricted by your easement with UPMC, where you can access the road?
Yes.
So they're kind of locked in with what UPMC did years ago.
Right, that's the only place we could enter.
And, and quite frankly, I would want any access to line up with Cumberland Wood's drive, so, um, which is what it does.
Right, exactly. Makes sense.
I was just thinking if there's a way to swing that curve further east, granted you lose some spots there. But, uh, I just don't like the idea of a, a real narrow pinch point coming out of our, fifteen feet is not very long.
And part of the problem is they also cannot lose spot.
What's the radius at the, the entrance point? It looks like you've got a, a wider radius than the fifteen feet of the drive itself.
It's twenty four, isn't it? Is that, is that correct?
That's the code requirement.
No, I'm just.
No, the parking, you're talking about at the parking lot.
No, the entrance to Cumberland, there's a, there's a radius there, is it?
Seventeen foot radius, there's a dimension on here, so where it ties into Cumberland at the widest point at sixty nine feet. Is at the very like widest point and then it has the seventeen foot radius on both sides. Oh, I'm sorry, twenty five feet, that's the guy, girl, twenty five foot radius, not seventeen, seventeen.
So they have the width at the entrance point.
Pull up and if you see a car, just stop.
Right, I'm, but I'm just trying to.
Trying to get to the equal to or better than?
Yeah. A rationale for, um.
Cause you got that spot, sorry Dan.
No, go ahead.
On the northeast side, that spot basically backs right out into the access. Or, or eastern spot. And never know, you said we weren't part of where, but the, the parking even over there is pretty tight. And then you've got a very narrow curve coming into it. I understand the reasoning, I, I just, I just don't like that setup.
I, I think it would be different if this were a parking lot for a commercial use. But in this case, everyone who moves stand here is agreeing to our parking policies, which include very slow movement and looking after each other. So, um, that's, that's, we're making the, the best of a difficult site in a lot of ways.
This may have been discussed and I missed it. Where this road goes back out onto Cumberland? It, what's, what's the elevation as it goes on to Cumberland? Are you, are you climbing a hill or have you already flattened out?
We've mostly flattened out.
Mostly.
There is, there is a there, there's slight grade there, but.
You said it was a foot difference in elevation.
Only a foot.
Yeah, it's about a foot across.
I think that's Pittsburgh flat.
Yeah, that's okay, that's.
Section and then I think it may climb another foot, but most of the, the grade is accounted for on a filled slope on that bottom side.
Okay.
And we did, um, make sure that it is in, um, compliance with the, and the sidelines and that includes the, the, um, angles of type of car.
Yeah, well, that was my next question about the sidelines, uh, all up and down Cumberland.
They've been tested.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on any of these? No?
No, thank you.
Right, do we want public comment now? If there is any? No public comment? All right. We have a bunch of motions to go through.
Can't do it this long.
Marvin?
I would not. I mean, unless, actually, that's why we have an attorney on the call. Hey, Steve. If there, it, can you hear us okay? Maybe, I hear it's okay.
Yeah, 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 I can.
Here we are, okay, sorry, we.
Stop watching TV.
No, we had some tech adventures last week. I was very prepared for the whole system to have died in the middle of the meeting, um. Anyway, so it, it seems, since we have the question as to whether all these modification requests can be voted together, that perhaps there is consensus that you all would like to vote the same way on them? Is that kosher, or should we keep them to one motion per modification request?
Um, I mean, I, unless, if it's unanimous, then I think that's fine, but if it's not, we should do them one by one.
Right, okay, well then let's the, maybe the most efficient way to do this is for any of you to indicate if there is a modification request that you would vote nay on.
Well, you seem to have the biggest concern. Express concern about that whole drive, pinch point, curve, radius issue.
Yeah, I, I would not vote in favor of E.
Okay, well, that answers that, then. We are going to do these individually, and if there is not unanimity on any of them, we will do a roll call.
Okay, so, uh, item B, motion to recommend town council approve the modification request number one to waive the requirement to build a sidewalk, sidewalk, which is really an internal sidewalk into the plan along their drive. Instead, there's an eight foot wide reinforced turf shoulder is proposed as an alternative. Is there a motion to approve that? Seconded?
Seconded.
Second from showing, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item C. Motion to recommend town council approve the modification request number two to construct a hammerhead turnaround large enough to accommodate emergency vehicles in lieu of constructing a cul-de-sac in order to preserve the low impact nature of the development. Uh, the fire marshal has reviewed the letter and approved. Such a motion? Al? Second? Sean, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Item D. Motion to recommend town council approve the modification request number three to waive the requirement of a fifteen foot buffer along Cumberland Road due to utility easement planting restrictions. And if you can add, add only those that it conflicts with the utility planting restrictions. That it conflicts with the utility planting restrictions. Remaining of the fifteen foot buffer will be constructed.
Also, I'm gonna, the condition that I'm gonna write is as presented on the plan to only incorporate. The areas where utility easements prevent plantings? Are we satisfied with that? That's accurate, okay? Okay, go ahead.
And then it says a partial planting, a buffer planting is proposed within the property access easement granted by UPMC pass event. Can I have a motion to? Shelley, motion second? Al, second? All in favor? Opposed? Item E, motion to recommend town council approve the modification request number four. To allow a portion of the access drive entrance to the shared parking. Be fifteen foot wide. Instead of code requirement twenty four. A steep grade change between the parking lot and Cumberland Road and risk of excessive encroachment on existing wetlands and mature woodlands. Prevents a full width access drive. Uh, before we do that, from Gateway. No issues from Gateway?
Uh, I, it's just gonna be, you know, if two cars are on the road, they have to pay attention to each other, I'd say that's the biggest thing. Um, whenever they turn in, I think there's enough, uh, area for a car to come in and a car to come out. So I don't have concern over, uh, anything really past that.
And, and all sightlines are good to see the other people going around these curves and such?
Yes, maybe if it would make those voting in favor more comfortable, assuming we have the majority. You might consider a condition such as posting signage that the road narrows, you know, like the things that you see at like a one lane bridge or whatever. Just to make sure that people are extra aware, although again, it should be frequent users, but maybe the visual reminder won't hurt, you know?
I, uh, I'm, I'm fine the way it's, it's written, I don't know that we need to add all that extra verbiage, but. Uh, so we have a motion, did somebody? Any seconds, Shelley? All in favor? I, I, opposed?
No.
We have two noes, Al and Brendan?
Okay, all right, and let me just make my notes. No, Al, Brendan, which means everybody. Okay, so that one is fourteen.
Okay, item F. Motion to recommend town council approve modification request number five. To waive the loading ratio requirement for drainage access, or excuse me, drainage areas to infiltration areas. Skip the parenthetic.
One's really long, sorry.
Much of the sites contributing drainage area is forested and or wetlands to remain in its natural state. And enlarging the currently proposed infiltration area would require expanding limited disturbance into otherwise undisturbed woodlands. Such a motion? John, second? All in favor? Opposed? None. Item G, motion to recommend town council approve the modification request number six. To permit a certain area fill slopes of one H, one V code requirements or three H to one V. And less than twenty foot in height submitted geotechnical report states that embankment slopes. Up to one H, one V and less than twenty feet in height shall not require additional engineering or stabilization.
Might be a good one to turn to. Gateway, how, how do you feel?
So, um, there's a section near. Plan of, uh, one of the retaining walls that we identified two to one slope, it was on one to one slope on. Uh, so typically, a one to one slope is not recommended, it is what's stated in the CLG check report. Typically, you would see two to one slope, so I will state that, um. But you didn't identify any large slopes, still slopes that were at a one to one, we just saw the two to one. There was one rain garden that had, I believe, maybe a one foot. Depth that was at one to one, that was the only area, it wasn't a steep slope or anything that would be of concern. It was the rain garden that we recommended they put a fence around to prevent anyone from, you know, stepping off the little path and falling into.
This feels like a good one to tease out a little bit more, I think. Um, maybe if one of you could come up here and chat with us. So. From the perspective of recording, what is potentially approved here? I have a couple of questions, one being, is it accurate that the. One area on the plan that would actually have a one to one slope would be that rain garden and two. If so, would you be amenable to the motion being written as one to one like for that rain garden? And then two to one for the retaining wall areas?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that is accurate, that's the only place that you.
Um, would you, would you put some kind of objective fencing or something?
Yeah, so. What we, um, uh. What we would, I think, prefer to do, um, is, um, because the, we do have one to one slopes around, um, that's. Uh, that rain garden, um, one thing that's not reflected, um, on the plans is the intent to, um, to do, uh. Uh, uh, forest boulder like small, almost like retaining stones along there. Uh, not an official retaining wall because we're only talking about, uh, one to two feet in height, uh, along that area. But because it is steeply sloped down and those, those stones themselves will provide, um, a visual as well as physical barrier. From that exact slope and that, uh.
It's gonna be a natural barrier rather than a fence.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe the, the one to one only for the rain garden as shown as on the plan and with. Natural barriers for safety and then two to one around some retaining walls. Would also be covered by this request, did I?
Yeah, the only thing, the only other thing I would add is that by and large, um, uh, the majority of the, uh, embankment slopes, um, on or. Hill slopes on the site have been, we've tried to do three to one or, uh, greater, uh, or shallower throughout the site. But there, um, there's basically one area as Kelly identified, um, that, um, the, um. Um, there's a two one slope, uh, facing the west side, um, um, the property, um, that was just required in order to. To basically have as little encroachment as possible on the, uh, stream that runs through that valley as well as the, the existing woods.
We don't, this doesn't need to be dealt with now, but for the council stage, if you wouldn't mind preparing an exhibit that just has those couple little areas called out on the site plan. So I can attach that to my staff report.
Showing the barrier you're gonna put in around here.
Um, did we vote on it?
We still need to take motions.
We, we need the motion as to be written by.
As, as, as been explained.
Uh, second? Second from Sean, all in favor? I opposed?
And here we are.
And last, but not least, motion to recommend town council approve the Rachel Carson Eco Village preliminary final. Land development application, and I have such a motion. Kelly, second? Second, all in favor? Opposed? I think that's it.
All right. We will see you September twenty third, presumably, if you need more time for revisions, we can bump you to the end of October, but I feel like you don't want that. All right. Thank you. I, I have, I have got some franking to do on my staff report. Cause I usually explain what the modifications are and why they might want to approve them, so. As early as possible, if there are any other illustrative exhibits that you would like to throw me in addition to that slope one. I would love to have them, because that means less text for me to.
Yeah, maybe you can blow up the roadway to, you know what I mean, just to show some elevations and how wide. That entrance curve is.
Um, let me look, sorry guys, uh. I'm not, I'm not concerned about mod one, I'm going off of the numbers and the agenda, right? Um, I'm not concerned about mod two because if I needed exhibits, I could just cut those from the plan right now, um. I could probably, I think mod three, I could probably just cut those from the control sheets that we have, um. Mod four, what Ann was just referencing might be helpful, um. Mod five, I don't think that there's anything you could show for that, we'll just have to explain it and then mod six, definitely, yes, if you could highlight those areas. So that way we have like an exhibit that actually shows exactly where those modifications were. Oh yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what. So it jumps out to me right now, but if I chew on it, I'll let you know in a couple of days, I think I'm pretty sure of that though, so. Okay.
All right. Uh, the next item on the agenda, item number three, the approval of the August sixth, twenty twenty four minutes. Any comments, edits, changes from anybody? None, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Al and Sean second, all in favor? Opposed? Minutes are approved. And we have a general public comment section, any additional general public comments to be made? Doesn't sound like it. Motion to adjourn. From someone? Seconded? Second, second from Sean. All in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned.
Do it.